Great.
All right, it is Tuesday, March 4, 2025. I have called this meeting of the Madison Mayor's Selecting the Order. First order of business will be the public reading.
My public reading is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the minutes from February 4?
Um, I had one small edit, Linda. Instead of Will Cox and Martin, it's Will Cox and Barton.
What was that?
Uh, page three, halfway down, under Selecting New Hays List. D A R T O N instead of Martin. Oh. That's it.
Do you want to make a motion to approve? Is it amended?
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 4 as amended.
One second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
I'll pass because I wasn't here.
Approval of the manifest. Uh, payroll, forty thousand, two hundred fifty six dollars, thirty four cents. Payroll liabilities, thirteen thousand, one hundred forty five dollars and ninety eight cents. Counts payable, fifty one thousand, two hundred four dollars and ninety one cents, and two hundred thousand to the elementary school. For a total of three hundred four thousand, six hundred seven dollars and twenty three cents.
Motion to accept the manifest?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to say public comment, but everybody here is on the agenda, so let's... Nancy, you got something else to say?
I'm on the agenda, aren't I?
You, you are.
Okay.
We're good then. All right, new business. First item being Department of Revenue, Vicki Ayers to discuss 2025 Reval.
Yes. Hello, everybody. I was supposed to be here back in February with Chad Robarge, who is your Avatar supervisor for the, for the revale, and wasn't able to make it. So I was hoping it would be all right for me to just go over our part, what we'll be doing as, in the department, to go alongside of the revaluation process and just give everybody heads up on, you know, how often I'll be in town, and hopefully you can inform the people in town as well. Um, we found out, and I'm sure you're very well aware, that all over the state there are very high increases in housing prices. The median ratio at this point, you know, is, I think, fifty one in, in Madison. And so that means, you know, quite a big jump to bring the values up to market, which is the job of the assessor to do in this coming year. And part of the, the thing that we do is get the contract from your assessor and just look at those in the department and make sure that they're all compliant with laws, which, which they are. Avatar is a great company and we've worked really well with them, getting everything we need. And so some of the timelines, I think that Chad went over with you all about when to expect your values to be set and the process to be done, hearings and that. He told me that he's already informed you of that schedule, so you're aware of that. And during this process, when Chad and the folks at Avatar are out looking at sale properties, which I think they're probably starting already, looking at properties that have sold since, I think, April 1st, 23, is what they were looking at, and up until, I think it was going to be March 31st, 2025, going to take all those sales and analyze those to see, you know, where the price, the costs, the increases are in those properties. And of course, they all aren't going to increase the same amount. They're going to be different for waterfront and that sort of thing. Manufactured homes we've found have increased quite a lot, which is unusual or, you know, but I guess that's the, the affordable housing option right now. Does Madison have any manufactured homes in parks?
No.
Okay.
Do we have anything up on sixteen?
I think that's still Albany.
Okay.
Well, there is that one, that Fall Lane area is, yeah, that's one small.
Brooklyn.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
On the road.
They got the five on the.
Sylvester.
Yeah, he's got maybe five on the same lot, but they're not really a park.
Not a park with, um, where the people do not own the land, they lease. Is that the situation?
There's someone who owns all of them and rents them.
They lease.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those have been the, like, the most subject to change, prices kind of erratically, which can pose some, you know, different problems for the assessor. Anyway, what I will do is, after Chad is done with, you know, his analyzing the sales, I will get a list of those sales that he's used from him, and I will take a sample and go out and measure each of the properties. I'll knock on doors, I'll ask people, you know, that have recently sold or purchased in the town if those sales were truly arms-length sales, because we want to make sure that's the case.
What does that mean? Sorry.
Pardon?
Arms-length sale, does that?
Oh, um, the definition of that is like exposed on the market fairly, you know, gone through a Realtor, or not something that is sold from relatives. Or where there was a special deal, or under duress of any sort, like a foreclosure sale, that type of thing. Those would not be used as his analysis. He would only use arms-length. And so we actually measure the properties and talk to homeowners. Before we do that, we send out postcards to all the people and ask them to make sure that they don't mind us coming to their property, and they have a chance to decline the visit from us. I'm not sure how your assessor works it. If, you know, people shoo him away from the door, I don't know how he gets his information, but we do give them, you know, everybody, opportunity to say no if they don't want a visit. The best way we've found is to have good PR, like for the selectmen and for the assessor, to put it out there to the townspeople, and especially people that are buying new into the town, and maybe from out of state, they don't understand, you know, the way New Hampshire does their taxes, property taxes, that, you know, that I will be maybe knocking on their door. And definitely the assessors will be walking around, looking at property quite frequently during this whole year, and just so that they're aware, if you put out some sort of, um, on the website or some sort of notification that just lets them know, this is, this, the DRA is going to be there, the assessor, they're wearing ID badges, they're gonna, you know, um, you know, have ID in their cars possibly, or something that the people will know that it's, you know, it's legit, that it's not a... People are very wary of scams, or, you know, people walking onto their property unannounced.
Do you coordinate with Chad or just separate days, separate visits?
Usually, we contact the homeowners directly after we get a list from Chad. But I know that Chad, Avatar puts out some sort of little statement of some sort, and they give it to the select board, I think, to advertise however you do it. I know some people do it, like, through the newspaper. I don't know if there's newspapers anymore.
But it'll be, like, you won't be, it's not like you and Chad traveling around together. It's different days, different times.
No, we're gonna be all different times.
Okay.
And that's why, you know, a, a lot of times I, I'll go to the door and somebody will say, oh, you were already here, you know, and, and I'm like, well, I'm, I'm not the assessor, but I can see why you'd get confused with that. So the other thing that's happening in Madison this year is assessment review, and that's a little bit separate than look, uh, monitoring a contractor. Like Avatar, we are taking a sample of properties and just looking, and I will take about fifty samples to look at the process of, is the data in all of these, on the property record cards, accurate? So I will actually measure out of that fifty-some sample, probably like thirty-five houses. And then we do that also looking at building permits. That's the assessment review part. So all in all, during this year, I'll be visiting quite a few properties, and, and I do stretch it out throughout the year. So, you know, it, it, we try not to, but sometimes we do randomly pick the same person a couple times. Especially if a property sells, that will come up on our list for sales, and then sometimes it comes up on just another sample of, for accuracy of data. So, yeah, just trying to be, you know, helpful to the taxpayer when I'm at their door and not, you know, intrusive in any way, giving them a chance to decline a visit if they don't want me, even at the door if they haven't gotten back to me, you know, they don't want to visit. If they say right then, no, I'd rather you not, we just go to a different place. But, yeah, having the heads up about that, about the whole process, I think is, is good. And if there's any way you can prepare people for the drastic increase that probably will happen. I know Avatar does a good job with that as well, when they talk to people at the hearings and, you know, sometimes that's after they've gotten their, their assessment, so it's kind of like a shocker, but they're good at explaining, you know, what, why it's happening.
Probably a television station. They could run a trailer underneath, saying that your house is about to be assessed. Duck.
Okay, because you, you do those PSAs.
I can do it, yeah.
So, yeah, if we get cautious enough information, she might go put something out.
We can, and then I, we can play it on the channel three, and then we can also upload it to... I do upload PSAs to the town website as well.
And if we have a print, uh, the...
Yep.
Too much paper for if we had a handout, maybe a town meeting, or let people know there's a PDF on the website and they can go to the assessing page and get information?
We don't have much now.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay. So I think Chad is going to put together, like, a little info sheet for us?
Yeah, once I have all the information, it's going to send it to me as well.
Okay. I'll go back and check my notes and do.
I think he, he usually does say at this, these meetings that he has something put together already, and I've seen it on a lot of websites where Av- Avatar is their assessor. It's very well done. So we will be, I will be walking around, visiting people, knocking on doors. And I also noticed that the, Avatar is also handling the utilities in Madison from the contract, but I wasn't sure what those were. Is it a, what utility is in the town other than, you know, poles, conduits, and that sort of thing?
We've got, um, the New England Telephone, Spectrum, EverSource, and New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
Oh.
Consolidated actually has a building, a substitution.
Okay. So basically, that's, you know, when Chad presented you with all this information, I was just going to tell you my piece in it, and that's kind of following the assessor's work and what they've done for sales. After the assessor's done with all the values, he will bring us what's called a Use-PAP manual. I don't know if he mentioned it to you, but it's a pretty thick book of the methodology of how he arrived at all the values. DRA has to review those and, and give them back to the assessor as reviewed and approved, and then they come to the town. So that's like the final piece of what he does. So then the next part, which I've already, already kind of talked a little about, is assessment review. And that happens every five years in a town, whether or not they do a revaluation. And if you have those charts that Linda printed out for you, those are... Something like that.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a complicated-looking chart. I apologize for that. But it basically goes through the areas of interest that the DRA has to look at and evaluate during, every five years. So one of the first things up in the top left-hand corner is the median ratio. And you can see that the median ratio... Give you each one of these. This is our ratio study. Yours letter looks probably a little bit different. But down under any and all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of these, Linda.
Thank you.
So the median ratio right now is for everything. The different areas, it's changed. Like, single-family home is different than waterfront property, as you can see. So what it's telling you is that prices are going to, well, if you look at fifty-one percent, it's pretty much double. And that doesn't mean double for every single property. They all kind of change at different rates. Some may not change tremendously, but that's an indication that, you know, a revale needs to be done. And so when that happens, properties are brought to a hundred percent of value, which is by law. And then your ratio should look something like, on this chart, in the range of ninety to a hundred and ten. So, and we expect when Chad's done with the work here, that'll happen.
So what exactly does median ratio mean?
That means the, um, sales to assessment, um, ratio.
Okay.
So what a prop, if a property is assessed for a hundred and fifty and it sells for three hundred, that's probably like a fifty percent ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm glad you're asking questions, because it's, you know, this, it can be complicated stuff. And I'm not a statistician, so a lot of these numbers, like, just, you know, probably you guys can figure them out better than me to some degree. The next one down that list is the C O D, and that's the coefficient of dispersion. That is a measure of, um, uniformity of assessments, so that, you know, if the ratio for, um, some properties is at ninety percent and some are at forty, you know, then you know you have a problem with somewhere in the assessor's work that, you know, there's something that hasn't been done correctly. These statistics are all used to kind of test the values that they come up with and see if they make sense, basically. And the, the, uh, the process is meant to be fair. You know, you can't treat, I guess, back in the day, we used to hear that to come up with values, you'd figure out, well, if somebody could own, own a big waterfront property from Massachusetts, then they could afford to pay more taxes than the person who lived in the trailer park. So, you know, it's, it's all based on sales and to be fair to everybody. And there's a very complicated process involved, as you would see if you ever tried to read a Use-PAP manual. So the P R D, I'm just skipping down to, um... To the, to the last box on that column, and that's the price-related differential. That's just like a comp, another complicated statistic, but it measures, um... So let's see where we are with Madison right now. One point oh two, which is actually pretty good. So if it stays in that range between ninety-eight and one oh three, then you're good. And that basically just shows how, um, higher-end properties, sometimes in an increasing market like we have, can be under-assessed, and that is not fair. So if your P R D got much larger, like one oh nine or even larger, that means that the very high-end properties aren't being assessed at their true market value. When you have properties that are selling unbelievably for over a million, sometimes the assessors can't, you know, figure out how to get them to that assessed value. It's, you know, they even have one or two properties that, it, it's just inexplicable that why they sell for what they do. I, that's a mystery to me, too. So those sorts of things are measured in these standards. And then some of the other things that we look at are just office practices. If on, on column B, access to public records is a huge area that we found a lot of towns have had some problems with, having to do with, like, ninety-one A requests, it seems to be increasingly, um, more frequent that people are coming up with ninety-one A requests. And even more important, that towns know what is confidential and what is, is public information. So that's, we're going to come in and take a look at, um, where, you know, if public documents are kept out, like property record cards online, that's a perfect example, where you wouldn't want any confidential documents, like, uh... Somebody applying for an elderly exemption that had all their bank statements ready for you to review laying on a table somewhere or in the public, so somebody could get that. Or if somebody came in and said, you know, I have a right-to-know request, I want the list of all your elderly people in the town, you know, there'd be a policy in place that you would all know, and everybody in the office would all know what was appropriate to give out and what was, you know, you had to make a decision on or withhold.
So in column B, how much of that is the town itself assessed, you know, evaluated for versus the assessor?
That's a really, really good question, because these, a lot of these areas kind of overlap. And if you hired your assessor to approve all of your exemptions and credits, say, and there's a folder or a binder for him to look at those and do an approval once a month, you'd want to make sure all those confidential documents were locked in a secure cabinet that everybody in the office knew that it was not accessed by anybody other than the selectman and the assessor. It's just to have a process in place. Usually, though, I've found that it's the offices that do that, take care of that.
Do we, yeah, that's part of what we do, is we review the, the tax credit.
Yeah, I, I accept them, and I put them aside until Chad comes in, and he does, he does it.
Oh, Chad does it, too?
Yep.
Um, and it, it's just the handling of things. It's kind of amazing that, you know, in some offices, people, they just don't know, and they're, well, you know, they have access to something or it's sitting out on a table or whatever, and it's, you know, it's confidential information. Or having it in a public file is one of the biggest things we've seen. So your public files are your property record files, and if somebody were to come in and say that, I'd like to see John Doe's, um, property record cards and his files. So Linda brings it over and hands it to him, and so there could be, um, an, uh, a P A twenty-nine in that, meaning the person is a veteran, and that application is public. That's okay to, for anybody to see. But if there was like a DD two fourteen attached to that and stuck in there by accident, or even a death certificate, or something that had a social security number on it, military ID numbers, those sorts of things are what we're trying to get protected, so. And then further down is inventory items. We're also going to be looking at the building permit process and how the town gathers what is, um, taxable as of April 1st of every year. And everybody has all different ways of doing that. It's pickups from the assessor, building permit, uh, building... Does, does the town have a code enforcement officer? And that's really good. So we'll take samples of some of those building permits, go out and measure and say, you know, look at, see if a garage is, that said somebody was going to build it in 2025, and it hasn't even been started, it should not be on the property record card, just those sorts of things. And then there's sheds that people can, you know, weekend, just have somebody come up with a truck and put it on their yard, and no one tells anybody or gets building permit, you know, and if we see things like that, we report that to the town, too. It's, it's kind of how well the town gathers all their taxable property, to be fair to everybody. I know in, um, Madison, the assessors do a cyclical, um, uh, work in the town where they go every year to a certain part of town and measure everything, which is great, because that's a great way to pick up things that people might not report and, and necessarily get building permits for. So after that is current use. Current use is always a really tough one to administer for every single town. There have been some changes in the current use from the current use board. Their standards that they gave to us to administer have become, instead of making it easier for towns, it looks like it's a little more difficult. And each of these areas are standards from the Assessing Standards Board that is, we come in and measure. We take samples, we look through files, and we give you kind of a report afterwards of how well the town has done with each of these areas. And it comes out in a letter form, probably not until June of twenty-six, by the time we get all that work done. And so since some of those standards changed and they got even more difficult, I put together, it's kind of a, a very thick, Linda, this is going to be for you, series of folders with each of those, um, in it, like, on current use, each subject, and some of the laws and rules that guide it, and some sample... of the laws and rules that guide it, and some sample worksheets and ways that you can manage it. Since, you know, not everybody knows when the laws change, especially when it comes to current use unless you're on the current use board. So I was gonna sit down with you, Linda and Kate.
Yeah.
And go through these. I won't do it in front of the selectmen, I think they, they're (laugh), that's a lot. But very detailed on how you can, you know, what areas we're gonna be looking for when we're checking, so that you have this year to put those letters in your file, or send letters out for information, um, for current use owners, things like that. Yeah, current use is always really tough. Is, is there a lot of current use land in, um, Madison?
Yeah, like fifteen thousand acres.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. So, yeah, that's probably a lot of work, (laugh) a lot of files. But we've found, you know, ways to make it a little more manageable, and the other thing we can do is some classes that, um, and we're, will be glad to do that through the year, too. Um, so column, oh, wait a minute, did I finish? Column C, I'll just skip to that. Exemptions and credits, kind of a similar process. I will come into the office, take a sample of folders of people that are receiving exemptions, solar, um, whatever, elderly, then also the same with veterans' credits, and look and make sure all of those, um, standards are being followed. Like, one of the big ones that towns miss sometimes is every five years, all of those need to be reviewed. And that means that, you know, you have a system where you're looking through, making sure if a veteran has passed away or moved, that there is some process in place that you're taking that credit away, or, um, or if a veteran passes away and his wife still res, deserves to get the credit, and she is, you know, just that kind of continual review of, of that process. Um, exemptions and credits are, um, cost the taxpayers money. And so if that's not being properly administered, it can be, you know, a place where money is lost, and, and it should be well accounted for, and people that deserve those credits and exemptions are getting them. So, uh, religious, educational, charitable is next one down. Those, I, I don't know if you keep up with any of the court cases that were happening. The Board of Tax and Land Appeals, um, recently took, well, a, a person in the town of Oscepe took the whole town to task over, eh, the masons getting a, a full exemption, um, and they were not defined as charitable. And it ended up that the whole town had to be re, um, reassessed. I, I don't know why they, really, it was kind of a big reaction to that one thing, but, and our department had to go in and look at all of the religious buildings, charitable organizations, and educational, and look and make sure all that paperwork was done correctly. And that was like a two-year-long process. That was very difficult for the town. Out of that whole court case came so a lot of new rules, um, for giving charitable exemptions. And, um, and I'll talk to Linda in depth about that. We have a great questionnaire that came from the Board of Tax and Land Appeals to help towns look at, you know, these questions. Is this being owned by this entity, occupied and used for the purpose of charitable or religious? And are they filling out their A-nines and their A-twelves? Those are the, the big deal on that. But, yeah, we have some good, um, good worksheets to work with. It's just a lot of people. A lot of towns didn't even collect the A-nines and the A-twelves. They said, "Oh, that church is still going," and so they didn't call. And I guess the Board of Tax and Land Appeals did not think that was, um, a good way to handle it. So, the next one, uh, is data accuracy. That's where, um, that's kind of my fieldwork. You guys don't really have to do much about that, except to give me property record cards, and I will go and measure properties and just make sure that all those measurements are correct. That's pretty extensive. I'm gonna be in the town quite a few days doing that. That's when I'll need a little, uh, and the other thing that I do is I always come to talk with Linda and let her know, and the PD know that I'm here, and what my plate number is, uh, that I have ID that I always carry, um, so that in case I show up on a Ring camera and they call the police, (laugh) which has happened, um, you know, or, or Linda gets a call.
That never happens, people never put their Ring cameras online.
Uh, I've, I've seen, yeah, pictures of myself on Facebook. Yeah, that's not always the, the nicest, but, um, anyway, we try to get ahead of that, again, you know, just letting the PD know, so that it's not a surprise to them as well if they get a call. And some people live in remote places and they're alone, and they're, you know, it's, they're scared, so they're gonna call you or the police and forget about our, the postcard that we sent them. So, the very last thing, again, is the use pop manual, that, that is responsibility of the, um, assessor, that you don't have to really worry about, you just have to keep it in your office as a public document. But this whole big process, just, let's see, I did have this as well. Kind of a timeline of how it happens. So that if you wanna keep this somewhere here, just to know that, you know, these are the months that I'm gonna be out, and kind of the things I'll be doing. And like I said, I'll be checking with Linda very regularly when I'm here, to let her know that, um, that she has to inform the police that I'm gonna be on somebody's Ring camera. And that's my card, too, so.
Thank you.
So I know I just rattling on a little bit, but do you have any questions for me? Or?
I don't.
No, I'll say.
Sure.
No, it's very, very informative, thank you.
Okay, good. And if you get a yellow postcard in the mail from Department of Revenue, (laugh) you have the opportunity to say, "Do not visit me." Oh, the one other thing, too, I wanted to mention is, um, if anybody posts their property note trespassing, we don't go on that. Um, yeah, it's just, somebody takes the time to post, then usually they don't want visitors unannounced for any reason, so, yeah, we totally respect that as well.
Good question on the review timeline. So this, when would this start for us? 'Cause it says notification letter, January first. I mean, is this the calendar year that we're in, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So you would have gotten, I think you guys did, um, Linda, you spoke to me about the, the letter that just kind of spits out of our computer program that says, "This is the year Madison needs the five-year assessment review." Um, and, and then it's coinciding with the revaluation. So you get a lot of activity in this one year, but it's over and done with in a year, I don't know.
Well, it sounds like, if they're both every five years, it sounds like that's gonna be the case, definitely.
You know, and a lot of towns have, because of the increasing values, have pushed their assess, uh, their revaluations closer than the five years. So that does happen, too. It, it gets off-cycle a little bit, but, you know, like I said, if you, you get it all done and over with at once, um...
You can go, just put that in your pen if you want.
I wanted to leave all of these folders with you.
Okay.
And...
Linda, you have given up on that a bit.
Sure. I got a copy of it on the side.
Sure.
PDF scan.
And these, yeah, I'm gonna, I told Kate, too, I saw her earlier, that I would come and meet with you guys, and it'd probably be like an hour, just going through each one, and just giving you guys some good tools to work with.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you all, and, and I will be seeing you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna skip over George and go to... George, you're up.
Thank you. So I just wandered through the warrant quickly, and, uh, let's see if you have some. So, a couple of things. One, a few things as I go through, and please stop me if you wanna emphasize something. Articles, uh, two, five, and six, I would like to get a clear statement from the attorney as to the authority of the Select Board to move funds between those three articles. I heard you say it both ways. I, I'd like to get a personal clear statement, that's the...
Yep.
Okay. Would that, that's gonna come from DRA, I don't know where.
It's actually just saying the exact same thing.
Yeah.
Would that come from DRA?
As opposed to Cordell.
Well, hey...
Maybe both.
DRA is not decisive. They have...
Yeah.
The, the authority is in state law, and I don't think our attorney, you should be able to just give you yes or no answer.
Yeah, start with Cordell.
It's not like you should cost us a lot of money to get the answer, but the voters are no doubt aware of it. Articles three and four, and again, stop me if you wanna stop me on something. Want to manage the time associated with this. I'd like to have a few people around at the end of the warrant, and if this goes on and start talking about the Brazilian factory that makes the thing and all the rest of it, I don't need any of that stuff. So the, the, and again, people may wanna talk about that, that's fine, but I don't. So I'm gonna try and keep the focus on the actual debate as to how to manage the greater question as efficiently as possible. The, uh, Budget Committee has sent out, or distributed last, uh, last night, the, a write-up in terms of their opinions on this. I'm not suggesting you do that or you don't do that, but it was, uh, it would be nice to have that there for a handout for them, so that people don't have to repeat all that stuff. It's there for people to read, they can do it in a few minutes before the meeting starts. And, uh, but if you, the Select Board, uh, disagree with the conclusion or recommendation from the Budget Committee, and it appears you do, um, then, uh, it would be nice to have probably a clear answer, and this is my opinion, and you might not agree, but a cl, a, a clear opinion, not necessarily an answer, a clear opinion, on whether the one-twenty or the one-forty is the right-size machine for Madison. I think depending on the answer to that question, uh, and how people, the voters feel about that, that would influence significantly what the final vote would be. So to the degree that you can have a nice, quick statement, whether from DPW or from you folks, that said, "Gee, this is the difference. This is what we can do with a one-forty that we can't do with a one-twenty," or however you wanna say it, I think that would provide some clarity and not wander through the history of it, the public hearing last year and all the rest of it. Keep the focus on what the right decision is, what the right machine is for the town. That's the recommendation. The debate can head off in whatever direction heads off in, but I'd like to kind of keep it contained, kind of, to some degree, 'cause this could go on for a long time, clearly. And people, people are passionate, they've devoted a lot of time and energy to researching it, and it seems that if they spend all that time, they wanna make sure you learn everything that they learned, and that's not how I wanna spend our meeting, that can become overwhelming. Try to be respectful of the folks that don't wanna listen to all that. Do you have any thoughts on that, or I should just keep going through here?
No, I, I, I like your opinion. I think we should have a clear-cut opinion, and I like to keep it contained as well.
Okay.
I, I would like to be able to differentiate between the greater, whether or not we need it, and what size we need, and the process, and not to combine them together, 'cause if you combine them together, the process is gonna get all mingled with the need of the actual unit, whether we need it or not. How much you need to separate that. You don't like the way we did it? Sorry. This is what we need.
Okay, and, and my starting point would be, I don't wanna hear about the process. To the degree that somebody has to complain about that, you know, that, that'll probably come out a little bit, but, but that's not gonna get us forward. We, we, we wanna talk about the articles that are on the floor, and they are not about the process that occurred last year.
But that's what that piece of paper from the Budget Committee says.
They, they have included in that document their history and their timeline and their assessment of what that process was. That doesn't, I'm happy for them to hand that out, I think it's fine, they have every right to hand that out. I, I think, I don't wanna hear that, as the debate on the floor, let people read that. If you wanna send something else out that contradicts that, or if you simply wanna make a statement that you disagree with certain sections of that document, fine, but, boy, if we start replaying, I, I think as you said, if we start replaying that, then we lose sight of the goal, which is, what's the right decision for the greater going forward? Right? I'm not trying to talk you into it, but I'm trying to get people to really rein in the amount of talking about what happened last year.
Yeah, I think the process is history to some extent, because it explains how we got here, why we have warrant articles this year, um, and it will help explain why we didn't have one last year. So process will come up, and I think there's a line in the greater statement that says, "Yes, here's the history, but here's what we think we should do now." So I think, yeah, I think they do at least state that in there, so.
Again, I, I, I'm not looking to stomp out free exchange of ideas in any way, I just would like to keep the focus on the decision in front of us, uh, as opposed to the history, and some of it will come out undoubtedly, but, yeah, let's, let's try to manage it. Good, thank you. Help me out if you can in that process. And then, moving the money between things, okay?
Excuse me, George, can I clarify on when you say moving money between things?
Right.
The, the way the, excuse me. Do, um, basically what the, the idea has been is like the whole bottom line, so like those three articles equal three point seven million dollars.
Well, that's what I wanna confirm.
Okay, so it's that and about when you say moving money between articles?
Right, that, that's what I'm saying.
More like a, is it really a bottom line?
Exactly, of the total, or is it three separate by a line?
Got it.
Because with other warrant articles, I can't take money out of one and put it in the other, and the question is, can you do that with these three?
So not necessarily move money between articles, but more bottom line is what you wanna understand.
Well, in practical terms, um, if I over-expand, or I want to over-expand Article five, and Article six has some extra money in it, yeah, I, I'm basically saying, do I, as the Select Board, have the right to take some money out of Article six and use it for purposes in Article five? So I am talking about moving it, the money, from one article to another.
Moving and bottom, so...
Right.
Two things, moving and bottom line idea, in a sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand what I'm asking.
I, I think so.
So where the cart, where there's public safety, public works, can an overage in one be used to cover, or underage in one be used to cover an overage in another?
Exactly, and I, I, maybe I've misunderstood them, but I've heard different statements by the various lawyers who've attended the meetings, and, and at least one of them made a statement when he was all done, I had no idea what he actually said, so it would be, it would be helpful to get clarity.
Well, that being said, should we really be asking Cordell, or should we be asking Chris Bolt, considering if that question comes up at town meeting, he's gonna be the one to answer it?
Well, it's the same firm, right?
It's not.
No, but I mean, the answer should be the same.
I would hope that the answer is the same, but...
Can we just ask both? Yeah, I'll at least start with Cordell.
Yep.
And I'm gonna have, um, in, the, beginning of next week, I'm gonna have a, a phone conversation with, um, Attorney Bolt to, you know, just go over all the little...
If, if Attorney Bolt's gonna be there, it'd be nice to know that him and Cordell are on the same page.
So I understand, and so, so Chris is not part of Cordell's firm, and, but Cordell sort of outsources this stuff to him, they, they kind of work together.
Well, he's, well, he's the moderator in his town.
Right, I understand.
So, so he, in, in years past, we've had Eric Mayer from the same, come, from the same law.
Who'd we have last year, Eric?
Eric. Eric.
Okay.
But he wasn't available this year.
Okay.
So, working with the same firm, Chris happened to be available, so he's gonna come instead of Eric this year.
But he isn't, but neither of them are in Cordell's...
Correct. Cordell's a one-man band in his...
Gotcha. Cordell has a lot of credibility, Statewide, and yeah, if you get the answer from him, that's...
And I'll just make sure that Chris is on the same page with that.
Personal preference here, but a few years ago, three years ago, the town voted 80 grand to set aside for legal fees for SDR fights and so on. Is it Cordell who recommended that we not pursue an appeal of the last case? Or was it someone else? Or, or did you not get a recommendation?
It would've been Cordell.
Okay. Is that personal? Probably personal. I couldn't begin to defend the decision not to pursue the appeal on the basis of the decision that I read by the court. The decision's bizarre and I was mystified by the decision not to appeal and I don't know whether that will come up, what it would be during the legal discussion of the legal line or something. People would have a right to say, gee, I'd like to understand what the thinking was. And so if someone could explain why the owner of an SDR doesn't matter, it's only the people sleeping there who are the ones, since they're sleeping there, who have a right to sleep there, which is what the court decision says, how does that not make every hotel in, in the world permissible in residential areas since the people in hotel rooms are sleeping there? And the owner is the one gaining the financial benefit. And that's basically what the court said. It didn't make any sense at all and I would, it would be nice if there was someone there who could defend the decision not to appeal if that, in fact, comes up after the meeting. Just a heads up, 'cause people have asked me about that.
That's getting, that may already be Cordell's recommendation.
And then how, what can we reveal about, you know, legal advice on public versus public?
That would be why I hesitated to answer George's question, but I think saying it came from Cordell is perfectly acceptable. But I wanna take another look at the recommendation just so I have something in the front of my mind to answer that question.
If you're bored sometimes, it's not that long, read the actual decision. Okay, so Article, I'm not a lawyer.
Don't you play one on TV?
I do. And Will with another new lawyer at the meeting. I doubt it, I won't find her playing. Article 10, I guess for curiosity, is the intent that this is approved to make that stipend part of the budget going forward? Okay. Once in a while, people ask, so the, over the years, the Select Board has moved toward making what used to be capital reserve funds, almost all into expendable trust funds, which is a significant change. So in, for 30-plus years, the town would vote to put money into a fund for heavy equipment and, and when the town, when the Select Board was ready to buy a piece of equipment, they would come back to the town, appear on the warrant, and we would withdraw the money from the trust fund and the town would approve making expenditure. Now, we've gone to a model which provides much more power and flexibility to the Select Board, where you have the authority to spend the money whenever you feel like it and it's your decision completely. And we've taken away from the authority of the town, which I tend to wanna defend all the time. We've taken away from the authority of the town, the right to give final approval to use the fund from the capital reserve fund for this particular purpose. And of course, there are emergencies and there are graders and all the rest of it. So it, it, people ask, but people should understand that when you're creating new expendable trust funds, which, and you do one or two of them in here, and you're adding to existing expendable trust funds, you are using a model that is different from ancient history. Mr. Brooks can talk about that and his dad's role in that. And I guess my question for you is, do you think about it that way? Have you made a conscious decision that we don't wanna wait for the town to give final approval for this purchase? Instead, we want to control the timing of it and the decision as to whether to move forward instead? And you're making that decision when you decide to use an expendable trust fund rather than a capital reserve fund? And have you thought about that?
Hasn't been a conscious decision on my behalf, but I can sympathize with the flexibility portion of it, for sure. And I think I would continue to lean in the expendable trust fund.
Just by observation, most of the time, I believe, the expendable trust funds aren't for new purchases, therefore repairs and...
Typically, yeah.
Maintenance of existing fleet.
Or in the case of the rec department, it's a place to store our donations and expend those types of monies.
That's a remotely...
And the capital reserve fund was replaced by the...
Is it?
Least purchase model that we've been using for the last 15 years for a lot of purposes.
My request is only that you be prepared to, to talk and explain that and I hope maybe just think about it when you make the decision to create a new one. Good. Blizzing along here. So Article, I'm almost done with my stuff. So Article 16 and Article 22, are they related? Am I missing something here?
They are not.
They are not related.
Okay, so the groundwater remediation is specifically the PFAS stuff? Okay, and Article 22 is a more general?
It's a watershed analysis of Silver Lake.
Survey, okay.
Yeah, Silver Lake is, SLAM has gotten together and, working with DES and an engineering firm, to do a watershed management study that's gonna take into account all kinds of stuff. It is gonna overlap with PFAS, maybe with the dam, but it is a roaming watershed management study.
And the decision in 16 to raise the whole hundred grand and put it in the expendable trust fund, and the decision in 22 to bond the hundred grand, go ahead.
In 22, is it worded as a bond?
It's not, not officially a bond because it's not over $100,000.
And the theory... Yeah, so the theory behind 22 is that this is all money that's going to be repaid via this grant. So it's not money that's...
It's actually the loan.
Or a loan, sorry. It's gonna come from a loan, so it's not money that's theoretically going to be raised by taxation.
Well, do we have to pay back the loan?
The loan will be forgiven. The, the process is that the loan will be forgiven other than it's either one or one and a half percent interest, which SLAM has agreed to pay from their donation as well.
Okay, and so the reason we need the three fifths? And I'm stunned. I don't understand why we would need the three fifths.
Because it still has, it's...
It smells like a bond?
It smell, yeah, basically. That's, that's a good way to put it. It isn't a bond, but it smells like a bond.
Okay, and I, I'm sure DRA told you that, 'cause they tell you stuff.
Yep, they approved, they approved the wording on this and Cordell got this. There's several of the towns in the state that are doing this exact same program with, with DES and he got wording from other towns that was already approved by DB, by DRA.
And he didn't wanna argue about that with the three fifths requirement?
No.
Okay. Okay, just trying to understand, 'cause it, it's not obvious, but okay. And, yeah, all right. So this is all about explaining to the town the unlikelihood of any tax money being used to expend. Having it where it is probably isn't a problem, 'cause we can go barreling into the next one while we're counting. Shouldn't be that many people there that late, but you know. Okay, so I guess, I guess I won't ask you to move it up to that level. Okay. The Article 17, the additional bank TV, mass TV money, is over and above the spectrum money and it's for capital purchases. Is that the theory? Is that why we're chipping in there? Because the operating budget? And I'm confused. I don't understand why it's there.
So it is, it is, they expended 42, 755, 99, but they got 43, 753, so they wanna use the rest of that, take the rest of the money that they got from Charter.
We've been do, we've been doing this for several years now.
I didn't understand how it worked. So they're taking, from their perspective, their budget surplus and trying to...
It's, but because their budget surplus is only the check that came from Charter. May not be the case this year, given what they're looking to budget, but in that particular year, that's what it was.
Okay. Article 18, the 25 grand. Okay, I'll let you explain that to people. I don't... I'm curious as to why, for example, Article 21 would be a non-lapsing fund. For 500 bucks, wouldn't we just spend it?
Well, excuse me. When this was originally written, the idea was for it to be another expendable trust fund. DRA was not on board with the purpose of the, spending the $500 and keeping it in line with how the RSA is written as to what you can use money for expendable trust funds. There's a little gray area there, because if we decided to use this for a student who wasn't from Madison or we wanted to offer another town some of that funds, you can't use money from an ETF to do that kind of thing. And the other thing that they, so anyway, so they recommended making it a non-lapsing fund for a couple of years. Same thing, there's a really good chance that you would, you're gonna spend that $500 and you can add to this on top of it. Another little caveat is, setting it up this way, you can accept donations towards the, the, the idea of sending or educating children, or what's the word we used instead of educating?
So you just put it in the operating budget, you couldn't accept donations? That's what it was then?
That, and the other point was though, that it's more like a, we usually ask for petitions when we're gonna give money away. So we didn't wanna put it in the operating budget, 'cause it was almost kinda like a charity idea.
It is almost like a donation to a kid to go to camp or something like that. So my understanding, the same thing happened to rec when they wanted to donate a gift basket to a PTO raffle, is that you can't take taxpayer money from a budget line and donate it or use it for charitable purposes.
I guess I'm nervous about these potentially filling up a warrant with all sorts of little donation things and stuff like that. We already have a patch and this seems like a very kludgy way to deal with 500 bucks. The accounting associate, we'll, we'll spend 500 bucks in accounting fees to keep track of this $500 when the audit is all done. So, okay, all right. I'll let you work on your explanation for that one. And Article 24, is this, I mean, we've already adopted this, so is this a change?
We haven't though. There's two veteran's tax credits now. There's the, the one we have, excuse me. The one we have now is based on dates of service and that you serve during a time of conflict.
Don't die to answer this question.
And this one is that if you serve 90 days honorably, you are eligible. It's, there's a lot less requirements to get this.
So it's, it's new legislation from the state or they were...
A few years old, but we haven't adopted it yet. So we keep the old one that people who have already applied and have got, we keep that one. But this one will be in addition so that new people can apply and get the new one.
Okay, and you, you don't have any information here about the amount of it and so on?
Well, it, it says it will be the same as what we already offer, which is $500. It just doesn't call it out, but it's the same.
Okay, as long as you're ready to answer that question. Did you have anything from Cordell with regard to Article 25? Any feedback with regard to it?
Actually, I did, right here. So he cited RSA 3139A, which is conflict of ordinances. A conflict of interest ordinances. So essentially what this, if this passes, this will create a conflict of interest ordinance for the town.
And previously, we only had a policy?
Previously, we only went by what the New Hampshire RSA was as to who could serve where and when. So we could have employees serve as selectmen as long as they weren't full-time or a police chief was the way that the RSA is written. But this will make it a little bit more stricter, more strict, which will essentially create an ordinance.
Okay, and do I have to explain the meaning of the word "sick" in parentheses there? That ordinance is misspelled? Is that...
Well, it's, it's...
It's right off the petition, right?
It's right off the petition and it's not misspelled, but it's the wrong word, 'cause ordinance, the way this is written, is like military...
I like ordinance.
Yeah. No, I understand the difference between the words. It is misspelled for the word.
For, for the purpose of what they want. And so I put "six," so nobody thought that I typed it wrong.
I could probably do five minutes in the front of the room and that will not be helpful at all. Okay, all right, so...
But town ordinance does sound like a good idea, though.
Not with you at the trigger. Okay, and Linda, you'll do a total of all the others?
Yeah, it's actually, I already, I already have it. It's down the bottom of this summary sheet. At the very bottom, the 2025 charity is a $32,000 on the nose.
$32,000 on the nose.
Yep. Which is a, almost a $5,700 increase over last year.
And did we do Way Station last year?
I don't believe so.
So this is the one new one?
If I recall correctly, last year, they sent a letter of intent.
Yes, but they never gave us...
But they never submitted the petition.
Way Station and Ospe Children's Fund are new this year. They didn't have anything last year.
Wasn't Ospe Children's Fund in it once?
We've done that in the past.
It has been in the past, but they didn't do it last year.
Small quest in the future, if there's a newbie, put them at the end or the beginning of the list so that, we, we should give people a heads up that this is a new one. You wanna get into this one, just to make it...
I just took them in the order we got them, is how I ended up putting them on here. But if you see on that sheet, this summary sheet?
Yes, yes.
You'll see what their 2024 request was and you'll see the zeros.
The zeros there.
For those two, that, 'cause they didn't ask last year.
Okay.
Oh, shoot.
Did you make a horrible mistake?
I did. I forgot to change the part that says approved by supervisors to intention letter received. Oh, well, that's different.
And as far as the operation of meeting, my approach would be for the non-petitioned articles to turn my head to the right and to look for one of you to move the article and for one of you to second it, so I don't waste a lot of time and Mike's trying to keep track of names and all the rest of it, so that speeds things up a little bit. You do have the right for the non-petitioned articles to speak first, if you choose to, on it and so just pretty much jump right in when I say, do you wanna talk about it for any petition article? The lead petitioner would have the opportunity to speak first and that's just how I would do it. And we should be ready for secret ballots in addition to the one that's required here. I have heads ups, let's say, probably at least a couple more, probably greater ones. G-R-A-D-E-R, greater ones. There might be a, a secret ballot or two, who knows? So make sure we're ready with pieces of paper that we need for that. Do you have anything?
And just for the record, those ballots that you just referenced?
Right.
Are tremendously expensive. Like ridiculous for the purpose.
So other towns, the moderators share information. There are other towns where it sounds like the, the office staff make a little bit of a craft party and find a way to create some sort of comparable pieces of paper.
Some of those could be...
But maybe what we're looking for is a printer who really wants to do this for a living with a lot of different towns and would come up with a more attractive price, right? That, that's what would be good. Who do we go to?
Local.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that to sp...
And I don't mean that disparagingly. I just, it's an expense that's a lot more than you would think it would be.
Well, it's not a secret. You can tell us what you think it would. Can you remember a number?
It's in excess of five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's a fair amount.
Well, for something that we may or may not use.
Right?
Yeah.
That's right.
We only use a couple of them.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And it's hard to, part of the expense is it's hard to gauge how many.
That's the other part? Yeah, we will have a decent turnout this year, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, I will reach out to my colleagues, but again, what's expensive in Madison, those people in Hudson think it's a really good deal, so I, we'll come up with, but I don't have a better approach. I mean, I think we need to do something.
Right.
Okay. We need Jim Deterik back, is what it's down to. He used to do it for free.
I'm sure we can get the sixth grader to do something.
He didn't do it for free. He paid for them and donated them.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, we got them for free.
We got them for free.
He did a few things.
Because they did them.
Yeah, yeah, no question. Okay. Thank you. If you don't have anything else?
I have a quick one for you. We're folks have been reaching out about a process for minutes.
For the minutes of the town meeting from last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
People have been reaching out, obviously, myself to you, about, do they have the opportunity? Is there a process for them to amend minutes? Like we, you know, review the meeting minutes for, you know, these meetings, and then we review and approve. So we've been deferred, we've been referred to town clerk as part of, you know, is there a process for reviewing or amending town minutes, town, annual town meeting minutes?
Well, I'll say I did reach out to other moderators, and without exception, and at least a couple of them were lawyers, they said the town clerk owns the minutes. There is no RSA or anything associated with approving the minutes, or editing the minutes, or contesting the minutes, or anything of that nature. Having said that, it's, I'm, someone who spoke up at town meeting and wanted to find a spot there to say they have an objection to anything, or differ with something that's in the book, and want it corrected, modified, or whatever, there'd probably be an opportunity for them to say that at that meeting, but it is owned by the town clerk.
Would we have to reprint the books?
Well, I've thought about it a little bit, and my suggestion would be to not do that, for sure, but to incorporate any changes that you wanted to make as the town clerk into a handout at the meeting, and to add them to the book for next year. So we add two years' worth of minutes if you chose to make any modifications. I'm making that up, but that was what I came up with, if we wanted to, if you wanted to make any adjustments to it. You have the authority, as I agree with you.
I can see his head swelling from here.
Yeah, no, the power's gone. There's no question. Anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Okay.
I guess, just going forward, I would like to see a process before the meeting goes into book, maybe to have folks be able to provide input.
That would be a request?
Right.
To the clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you, George.
Nice one. Mr. Rudolph, thank you.
You're welcome.
A pleasure, an honor.
Yeah.
This is it.
Yeah.
This is officially your last few hours meeting.
I might even buy your cupcake.
What a guy. It's not in the budget.
Northway Letter of Authorization for ZBA escrow accounts.
Yeah. It's signature cards, just like you always do. There's a letter that just tells the bank that it's okay to open the account, and if you want to signature items, but I wanted to explain why it was there, because the ZBA had to open up an account to keep money in there in case we have to hire a planner for the cell phone tower.
Right.
So that's what that's all about.
And we're depositing a check from the company, basically like escrow kind of thing?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Would you ever move that to signature items?
I am.
You all good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Nancy. Nancy Markham, how about, I was at the historical society. Did you all get a little note from me?
We sure did.
I'm just going to give you an updated one. I added, added one more to that, which is the placing, that's not the one I want.
Replacing the doors?
Replacing the front doors, yep. And we've got an estimate on that. But, okay. Did we get one? Took it away. There you go. We, we talked last year, actually, about painting the roof and the exterior, and we had three quotes, and we all agreed that BD Works would be, would get the contract. I don't know how that is and works at this point. I've spoken to Parker, and he said, call me in April, so we're going to get a date if, when the snow melts and the building warms up or whatever. So I'm assuming that's going to happen?
Yep.
Is there anything that we need to do besides contact him and say, we're ready for it? Has he contacted you? Do you need to?
I'm trying to remember how we did this at the last meeting. Didn't we give?
I looked back at the minutes from when we talked about it, and it caught me in here, but I don't, there wasn't a whole lot of detail on.
Did I miss that?
Well, it was in twenty-twenty-two.
So the selectmen are the agents to expend on the ETF? So kind of actually following up to that question, you know, that George had about doing the capital reserve versus ETFs, and basically our new process, or new whatever change, was to do ETFs with the selectmen as agents to expend, and that means the selectmen effectively, the town has given the selectmen the authority to spend it as they see fit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you? These minutes are from?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, that was last year.
That has Josh on here. I'm pretty sure I was here when we got this quote from Parker.
No, the minute, these minutes are just the annual minutes to create the ETF.
Oh, I couldn't find any other minutes. I tried to look, and Nancy couldn't remember coming back, other than that, same date that I had.
Yeah. No, I remember seeing this proposal for the paint.
It's also dated in twenty-twenty-two. I love that. Price is company.
Right. Have we discussed with Parker whether or not the price is going to stay?
No, but in that quote, it says something about, and it may not be this. I mean, that was in twenty-twenty-two. He was, he was at least a year out, obviously, and he gave you a quote for that. But understanding that it most likely will be.
But yeah, I mean, we've already, I mean, not that we, yeah, we're the agents to expend, so we would need to give the authority to have the work done, so that when the invoice comes here, then we have the authority to expend it. But we've already done that.
Okay. So for paper trail, would this be kind of like a green sheet sort of thing, where they would attach an estimate, we would approve it?
It wouldn't be an estimate, because it would be the invoice. Once Parker's being, we have already given the authority for them to get the work done, back when this estimate came in last time.
Did we document it then?
I remember that specifically.
I mean, we were trying to find meeting minutes. Would it be easier to have? I mean, because there is like one for estimates, right? Kind of a, not a purchase rec, but a.
Those purchase rec was, oh.
Something very similar to a purchase rec. That's basically approval to have work done.
It's a request for payment.
Yeah.
But if there's an invoice, you wouldn't need that. If there's a purchase requisition that says that you already approved it, then you wouldn't need anything else other than invoice, because you have something.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just thinking purchase recs.
Once you have Parker in line to do that work, and he confirmed that the price is the same, and get with Linda, and we'll fill out the request for payment. That way, when the invoice comes in, it's just we write the check and we're going to go. There's a little green sheet that we have to fill out for the expendable trust funds.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll keep in touch with you about that. Are we all set with that?
Yep.
So, just to let folks know, you know, we appreciate the money coming from Warren Articles in this, we'll be able to do that. We're also appreciative that the town lets us use that building for our historical society. And understanding what the taxpayers are paying for, and then some of the work that we're planning to do this summer, we're not going to be open as we normally are, because we're going to do a lot of renovation and have different, different programs outside. But just to let you know, since it's the town's building, what we plan to do, one is that we've made arrangements to have two windows removed and refurbished. That fifteen-hundred dollars comes from a grant that we've, we've gotten, which was from the Henny Fund, and then other projects that would be funded by our own fundraising and our own monies. Maybe some, or not all of these, is to spray paint the ceiling in the main room, paint the kitchen and stage floors, refurbish the original interior window shutters, paint the fence that was installed in twenty-twenty-four. I guess the, the largest project that we're hoping to do is to remove the green wall board from the main room, and discover what's underneath that. The green board is lean and broken in many places. When they moved the building, a lot of it buckled, so it really could use a refreshing. So that's what, that's what we plan to do.
And it was ver- double verified, right? That that does not contain asbestos?
Yeah, there was a question at some of our meetings about asbestos, and we had somebody come and look at it, and they've guaranteed that it's not, there's no asbestos in that. We're not sure about the ceiling, but we're not going to do anything but spray it. We're not going to get into it, so there's that. Repair and paint the walls in the main room, clean and urethane the floors in the main room, and replace the two front doors, or the front door that's in two parts. So just so you have an understanding, or questions or thoughts on that work.
Now, these, yeah, the ones that say funded by the Massing and Historical Society, those are expected to come from the expendable trust fund?
No.
No.
That's all our money.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing coming from that, at this point, is Parker's painting.
Painting, yeah.
But we thought you might want to know what's going on there.
Absolutely. Sounds like a good little overhaul.
How much to do the doors?
We just got the quote, I think it was thirty, it was thirty, maybe thirty-five?
Thirty-five hundred.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, somewhere around that short, yeah. They're going to, they're going to build replicas to, I forget the name of the guy. He's over in Osipic. He does, he's the shutter man.
He's a what man?
He does shutters. He's known for building shutters.
Beach River Mill?
Yes.
Yep.
Randy. Yeah.
Probably look at the front doors in this place. Remember we looked at that years ago? We got some crazy price.
Because they're taller.
Because the doors are narrow.
And they're taller. They're plot size.
Yeah, that stock.
Purely curiosity, but do you have any idea what the sum total of all of those extra projects is supposed to be?
Nope. And we're not even sure if we're going to be able to do all of them. But I mean, this is a list, this is a pretty, you know, pretty big list of things for us to do, so.
And a lot of it was going to be sweat equity, right? A lot of it, a lot of it was historical society members and directors doing a lot of the work.
Most of us are going to do the job, or, you know, Chris is volunteer to spray paint, you know.
I was just going to say, you're going to put Chris to work all summer, right?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah. As soon as, as soon as we can get in there. Yeah. Feel free to jump right in. Looking for volunteers.
Now's the time, you're on TV.
Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sure Chris is going to be hauling some of the scrap you're taking down, taking it to the transfer station. Have him identify that it comes from a town building.
Comes from the town, yes.
So I don't have to give him a bill.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're good with reaching out to Linda about the expendable trust fund? You're all set there? You understood Ross's name?
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact. When, when I get in touch with Parker, I'll be in touch and what you folks know that's happening.
Perfect.
That's good.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Asia, you want to buy me a camera?
Yeah, so I'm here tonight to request funds, or the approval of funds from the Madison TV Equipment Fund account for the purchase of a new camera to replace this one in the town hall. This one was purchased either in twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty, which means it's pretty much at the end of its life. Good thing we're not cameras, huh? They don't live long. So I had gotten a quote for a Sony camera for the twenty-six fifty-eight on there. The board, the Mad TV Board had made a motion to approve up to twenty-eight-hundred, I believe. So I'm just coming before you tonight, because the, it's, it's over a thousand.
Yep.
Although I did get a phone call today from a representative from Omnia Partners, and they're like a cooperative purchasing outlet, I guess you'd call it. I had never heard of them before. I don't know if he was trying to reach me, but I guess we have a membership with that, or the town has a membership with them. I don't know if we've ever used them.
What's their name again?
Omnia, Omnia Partners. And he had, he gave me a member ID and everything, but pretty much, it sounded like they could get different quotes at different discount rates for us. In his email, it said we've been partners with them from two thousand twelve. I had never heard of them before in anything, so I don't know if that's like an avenue I should.
I would ask them to send over whatever agreement was signed, right, whatever they're claiming are fixing.
I'm going to have to look them up just now, and all I got is the nightclub, so I'm going to stop.
So I don't know if it's worth, you know, speaking to this Omnia Partners more to see if they can get better pricing for us. We, the quote I have is from B&amp;H Photo. We do have a government account with them, which provides a discount. So, I mean, we've purchased from them before, and I'm happy with them, although they're a little bit priced higher hold of. They have plenty of them, but. So I don't know, I guess my question is, I don't know if you need to approve an exact amount. So, you know, if I find like a better price, can I still have the approval to purchase a camera if it's under that amount? Or do you have to approve an exact amount that we can sign?
I think, well, the way our form was written out, I think we can approve an estimate of twenty-eight-hundred, but not to exceed.
Yeah, up to twenty-eight-hundred.
Yeah, okay.
My only question, let me pass for a minute. Looks like the chairman of the Madison Board had some concerns about spending half of the equipment fund. It was voted three-zero, so clearly she voted with it, but was that discussed at all?
Yeah, we did discuss it, and the chair did voice her opinion that because we, we want to take the money from our equipment fund, and it only has a little over four thousand.
Four thousand.
Yeah, so. But then, like you said, in the end, she voted toward, in favor, so.
What is the equipment fund? Is that, how does that tie in? Is that a budget line item? Is that a ETF? Is that? What is the equipment fund? Is that, how does that tie in? Is that a budget line item? Is that a ETF? Is that?
It's, um, pretty much like a checking account, I guess.
Helped by the treasurer, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in, I don't know what page it's on. In this version, I think last year's annual report was on page eight sixty, something like that.
It might be, it's in the seventy-sixth area here. Uh, seventy-seven. Yeah, Madison Peak TV account. It's held by the treasurer.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's not in the trustee of the trust funds, it's.
Correct.
So this signed by the selectmen and the copy of the invoice would give the authority for Jordan to write a check from that account. Perfect. All right, thank you.
I'm good with it.
I can make a motion, you want a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion, um, to approve a purchase up to twenty-eight hundred dollars from the Mad TV Equipment Fund.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And I just, I was asked to ask about the extra noisy. Boiler or what it is.
Yeah, it's getting fixed this week.
This week, yeah.
I hope so, because I can barely hear you with this behind me.
Yeah, and I, I think that's been the concern, is that the camera picks it up a lot.
It took quite a while to get the part, there's a fan that needs to be replaced.
Okay, great.
And if Omnia Partners calls again, I wouldn't, wouldn't give them any information whatsoever, just ask them basically for, if we have some sort of membership ID, like sending whatever contract we sign or something like that.
Yeah, can I, can I send it off to, either send it back to you?
Sure, I can look in QuickBooks too and see if I've written them a check before.
They were actually kind of like, oh, we don't know how we got you on the phone, we were hoping to talk to, like, the selectmen or something, so I can't. I don't know, it sounded a little, uh.
A little shaky.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, it's not good enough.
I don't wanna forward it off, I'll see if I can.
If I can find anything, if we've written them a check before, or.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then always feedback about microphones and, are the microphones used at Camden Night last night, or they? School microphone, Mad TV microphones?
Those, those were a school microphone, I lost that.
Okay.
Those, actually, the whole system, sound system was from school, that's right.
Okay. All right.
We didn't, we had another commitment to the.
Yeah, I'll mention to them that people can never, you have to eat the mic in order to hear.
Yeah, those will have to be, these are different than those.
Thank you.
Yeah, and unfortunately, these don't work in the gym when we're, you have to find it, because they're such a sensitive microphone, and they pick up so much sound that they just create feedback. So the handheld mics are the ones that we have to use.
Do we know when the last time was they replaced those? You don't have to, I'll, I can.
I don't off the top of my head, but I could look. I, I saw some invoices for microphones today when I was looking for the camera invoice, so.
And the school pays for those?
No, the school has, the school has their own equipment, and we have our own equipment, that's Mad TV, so. Some events, we are using our own sound equipment in the gym, and others, the, the school is. But mostly if it's, unless it's a school-related event, where Mad TV is using.
So the ones that were used last night, are they gonna be used at town meeting in a week and a half?
No, we'll have, no, Mad TV will have theirs.
Okay. All right. All right, cool. Thank you.
All right. Jordan, you have a list?
My data, can't remember what was on it. Um, just a, I guess PFAS update, um, been trying to work with, we, we still have the three certified letters we sent out. For the three remaining properties around Town Hall to be tested, we've still only heard back from one. Will Cox and Barton did send the feedback from, um, Hampshire DES about their two hundred whatever page report, the submit, the data submit. A data transmission of all of the, um, testing that was done this fall. They had some recommendations, they definitely want to see those, all three of those last properties tested. Um, and they, um, Madelena, Will Cox and Barton also indicated that they want to see more. Reporting, there are different type of reporting, or additional extra reporting. So Russ Barton was out on vacation this past week. So, um, she and Russ were gonna regroup early this week, and then, um, I asked them if we could set up a call to kinda, um. Touch base on, on all of that. And again, hopefully if there are additional reporting requirements, there are also going to be additional cost associated with that. So to make sure, um, we understand what those costs will be. Oh, Linda, the money hasn't come in yet, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. John?
Uh, a couple of things. We got on the transfer station. Running a little behind, actually running a lot behind last year for some reason. Not seeing many contractors, and I don't know what that means. I don't know if it's indication of something larger. But since Christmas vacation, I can count on one hand the contractors that have been in there, on one hand. Are about.
Weather?
One of them said it was weather. But in comparison to the numbers from last year, at this point last year. Well, this year we're at. Forty-eight hundred and thirty-five dollars in so far this year, against sixty-five hundred last year. So that's substantial. I don't know if it means anything. But I'm just not seeing contracts. And I can tell by the times going out very late.
You're, you're gonna give me that report every other Tuesday? When you're not gonna be sitting there?
I might be sitting right over there.
There you go.
Because I know how this works. We are gonna be starting, um. We'll be satisfied for another month for steel aluminum. We're gonna be, well, we haven't totally committed, but they will take us on a contracted price through NRR A. Harding the Mill. As of the end of January, we did a price survey, actually, uh, Dave did it. Locally. Thirty cents a pound for aluminum, locally. Harding's will pay us fifty-nine cents a pound. Uh, scrap iron. In the January, locally, it was going on at fifty dollars a pound, fifty dollars a ton, I'm sorry, fifty dollars a ton. And Harding's was paying ninety-three dollars a ton.
Well, you can tell Joe to give me a call, because I'm not getting those prices at work either, so I'm just feeling better than me.
But you're gonna join NRR A?
I guess.
Uh, we're gonna, we, we've started taking aluminum in the new container, which also is about thirty percent, uh, no, it's twice as big as the old container, which means fewer trips. So we should be, we'll see how it plays out this coming. We've got a container for metal, our own, we own it. We've got a container for aluminum, we own, over the years, we've collected units. Now hopefully they start to pay off. Dave, you've been figuring in his transportation. Sixty-nine dollars round trips in to, uh.
Northwood?
Northwood.
It's one hour, ten, hour fifteen?
Yeah, what did he say?
It might be an hour and a half, if it roll along.
I think, I think, uh. About two hours.
One way?
No, round trip, two and a half.
Okay, yeah.
Two and a half hours.
Yep.
So that is really, that's actually closer than Berlin, which is three hours round trip. And Portland, which is three hours round trip. The next thing we're gonna be working on is, uh. Our recycling, our paper, plastics, codwood. The price has gone nuts. So we're, we're gonna work with NRR A if I, if we can find different source, because. It would actually be far cheaper, and I know people are not gonna wanna hear this, it'd be far cheaper to take it. From a recycling contractor and bury it. It saves almost forty dollars a ton. And that's a lot. But the market changes, so right now we're, we're not. We're seeing if we can contract to NRR A. Is that it? See you on the dump?
Well, I guess at the top of my list is to thank you, Mr. Rudolph, for hanging out with us again. I hope you're actually done this time. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
You gonna stay retired this time?
Huh?
You gonna stay out of here this time? Are you coming back?
No, 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 no. If I come back, I'll be sitting back over in that back row. Just to talk about the trash.
I can't wait. Uh, Heather's not with us tonight, but. Spring sports registration is open right now. We have. T-ball and softball. You know, a bunch of kids are already set up, but as far as I know, those registrations are still open. She's working diligently on summer camp already. And we're gonna be in the need. Going to need some counselors this year. I know a couple of them that were here last year, won't come back. Um, or aren't coming back, not that they wouldn't, because they love us, but, so anybody out there looking, please reach out to Heather. And then voting day. I'll be there all day. Want to discuss with you two if you plan on being there, or when you plan on being there, next Tuesday.
Available? You, you gonna be there for opening?
I will be there for the entirety of it. It's my favorite thing to do.
Yeah.
I, I'll be there when calls open.
I'll check in.
I had blocked my day, so I'll be available all day. Is there still that requirement that at least two selectmen must be present, or is that only for national or higher level elections?
I'm pretty sure it's for all elections, and I think. If you read the statute correctly, that we're all three supposed to be there all day, but. It is a local election, I don't foresee anybody coming in and yelling at us. Or scolding us.
We'll not be inspected.
Okay.
Can John just assign a proxy?
That's what we have lived before.
Yeah, cool. I made, I'm your pro temp?
Yeah.
There it is, that's why.
So there'll be at least two of us there with Linda as pro temp regardless. I just wanted to double check.
There's no meeting scheduled.
I think that's it. Linda?
Yep, I think so.
Mr. Brooks? Anything negative you want to throw at us? Thanks. All right, so we're ready. We're just ready for Rudolph. Today? Yeah, I don't know what they got for him. I saw Martian got carded out Sunday. I haven't heard, I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, my daughter texted me, that's my favorite player, traded.
This is.
The letter to set up though. Another signature cards, or you should find your name there somewhere. Joy is in second. Next one, it says no gambling is allowed with that, that just needs to be sent in.
All right, so we got John on this one, and then Joy on the next one, and that should be it. Oh, and then everybody on the front, sorry.
And then we'll do this all again in a couple of weeks, because we'll have all the signature cards.
Why are we gonna say something like, why are we doing this now?
I know, we will, we wanna get it set up, because Northways changed into Camden National.
Oh, yeah.
So we wanna get it in place before they change or.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, in just a couple of weeks. That's a, um, el, uh, elderly exemption that Chad already reviewed on paperwork and everything, and he, so, yeah. Approved it, because it was generally eligible. And that would take place for twenty twenty-five.
How much is the elderly exemption?
It depends on your age. Yeah, so it's twelve thousand, twenty-five thousand, or fifty thousand.
The taxable value?
Taxable value that you don't pay tax on. And you know, thinking about that, it's, to, to, to look into eventually, would have to be changed at town meeting, but, I mean, if. If you get. A twelve thousand dollar exemption, and our tax rate right now is at fifteen, whatever, and it goes down to, it went down to twelve dollars. You'd only get, you know, twelve times a hundred and forty-four dollars off your taxable. Which really. In some cases doesn't help.
Right.
That much. I mean, helps, but.
Anything helps, but that doesn't seem like enough.
Especially if they're, you know, the.
Looking at that particular case, it'd probably be helpful if it was a little bit more.
Well, the most they can make is thirty-five thousand dollars, so if you're living off thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, a hundred and forty-four dollars off your taxable is not gonna.
I think a little bit helps.
Sure. Hey, that's a coffee at Starbucks, a hundred and forty-four? Yeah, sure. Um, actually, we don't, that one is a supplemental, so it already had a number.
Okay.
Um, this one, we, we don't, can't assign a number until after you guys sign it, so.
Okay, definitely.
But that was, yeah. That's why it already had a number.
I thought I saw that one local where.
Yeah. And still invest that annually.
Yeah.
She was following that. One thing I meant to give a shout out to, um, was Town Clerk's office, um, everyone, Adam, the school, Mad TV. Um, who set up and ran George as moderator, ran Candidates Night last night. Very well attended by candidates and, um, voters alike. So just thank you to everyone who helped set it up, and thank you to everybody who, um, or came, both voters and candidates, so.
That's the most people I've seen at a, at a, at a candidate event. You're lucky, you usually get ten people.
Yeah. That's great.
And nine of them working for office.
I mean, we did one, you and I did one at Nicole's store, there were what, thirteen people?
Yeah.
How many people did you say last night? Somebody said seventy, but I have no concept of.
Yeah, probably pretty close to that.
Okay.
Thirty people, thirty-five people per side, yeah. Disappointing that, other than people that are sitting on boards, there were no parents in the crowd. For the school board Candidates Night. I'm not including us, because we sit on boards, but. I saw, to the best of my knowledge, there were zero parents in the crowd for the school board candidates. I know it's harder sometimes for the parents, a lot of the people in the crowd are retirees, but. A little disappointing nonetheless. All right. With that, I'm gonna make a motion that we enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one A. Colon three, Roman numeral two, little c matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance for tax payment or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Can I get a second?
Second.
Vote Paul, vote.
Joy, aye.
John, aye.
Adam, aye. Thanks, Natasha. The coffee. We're up all late now.
So you can just read about, um, the livestream was delayed a few minutes, just because. It was crazy for me to go through from the library to the gym, and then Asia was live, live streaming another, um.